Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Publics Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Amwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Ruddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. May I have a roll call, Mrs. Spitzer, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
And Mr. Reimer?
Thank you. Can we rise for the flag salute, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, everyone. Mrs. Kellogg, would you read our district mission statement, please?
Hundred and Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society.
Thank you. Can you folks hear us in the back? I don't know if all the microphones are working.
No, not great.
Okay. I can hear mine is working. I don't think Mrs. Kellogg's was on.
We'll get the volume up.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes from the July 17, 2023 meeting? Sorry.
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Obsteem.
And Mr. Reimer? Motion carries.
Thank you. We have two items of correspondence, as noted on the agenda, and with that, we'll move right into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Welcome. I feel like welcoming everybody back from the summer, but I know we met in July. But one apology, there was, we like to hold our meetings in this space. There are different times when we have to go to the little theater for one reason or another, but this is the space where we generally like to hold our meetings. And there was a little bit of a miscommunication that we were in a different location on campus tonight, but I'm glad to see everybody made it here. We put some signs up. So apologies for that. There was no change. It was just a miss, a mistake at one point in staging the advertisements for the meeting. Now, we move into, I like to think about some things that the reading of the mission statement sort of sparks in me, and we've been doing a lot of work over the past couple of weeks with our district leaders, our supervisors, our principals, vice principals. Lots of discussion about leadership traits, what traits are necessary to do the kind of work that we want to do in support of our strategic framework that's focused on equity, personalization, and service learning, and just making the plans for the year on how to continue to grow those notions. Now, we have a very strong and thankfully detailed equity policy that the board passed last school, the school year before last. This year, the work that's in front of us together is some policy on personalization and service learning, if we can sort of talk through some of that as, you know, potential ways to get the board's feeling on those things, so that we can move forward and build goals here in the district for those two strategic thrusts. The equity policy's been invaluable in helping to frame our goals, so we appreciate, you know, how that's come together. We're in great shape in terms of staffing moving into this year. We won't have any open teaching or other slots come September 1st, and we're real pleased with the group of new staff who are coming onboard, who are going to be here on the 29th, 30th, and 31st. They got those days correct. 29th, 30th, and 31st. And so again, if any of you are interested in joining us, the morning of the 29th is a good time to join us, but if you have other chances to join us to greet the new staff, just let me know, and we'll see how we can fit you in the agenda to say hello to them. Really pleased with the quality of folks who have chosen to come here and join us this year as new staff members. Tonight on the agenda, we have Mrs. Candelosi-Hayde to do three presentations, right? You have three separate presentations that you're going to go through. All three are mandated presentations on student achievement across different elements of testing and also our graduation pathways, and so she'll present on those. And we have, I think that's it for, we don't have any hibs to move on tonight, it being the summer. I do want to point out a couple items under our organizational items section. Each year, let's see, each year, we have annual items to adopt the curriculum and also adopt the textbooks. Those come through to you each year. With your approval of the curriculum tonight, we'll be in a position to put all of the curriculum documents on our website in the coming weeks. That'll be the culmination of that project. We've been working really hard at that over the past year, year and a half, to get all those documents in a, in a position to be able to put on the website for everyone to have access to them. So from tonight's approval, we'll get right to staging those on the website. You do have here, attached to the agenda, the new slash revised courses that we're putting forward tonight. Everything else, though, is here to be adopted in full for the program starting in September. We also have a required annual re-upping of our Chapter 27 Emergency Virtual or Remote Instruction Plan for the coming school year. With COVID and then the federal assistance that flowed soon into the pandemic, the ESAR funds, et cetera, we have to each year update and approve our virtual remote instruction plan. So there weren't too many changes from last year, but we do have to put it forward for your approval, and once you approve it, we'll send it off to the Department of Education to meet our obligations there. Couple of news items, and then I'll turn it over to Jessica to present. Our summer projects have been on schedule, thanks to Heather Spitzer and Don Thornton and everybody who's working on our construction projects. The IMC parking lot was done in the blink of an eye, it seemed, at the beginning of the summer.
It's very smooth.
It's very smooth. If you look down two of the main hallways on the 100th level of the 910 building right now, you'll see that the lockers have been removed and we're putting in bench seating. It is breathtaking when you look at how much seating is going to be available in those hallways and how much more open those hallways look as a result of taking those lockers out. So we're very pleased about that, as that's the campus where we struggle most with unit lunch seating and crowding. We also have, in the 1112 building, cutting-edge life skills suite for our special education department, working with Carol Webb back there. They've picked out furniture. The construction's moved along on schedule, and they're going to be in good shape, and we're looking forward to them taking occupancy of that room with our life skills, life studies programs in the special ed department. We have a mental health program that we've been selected to participate in, that I want to make sure I mention tonight. We've been accepted to join the Department of Education and the Rutgers Center for Comprehensive School Mental Health in a, in a mental health in schools technical assistance program with other districts. So there's a cohort of districts who'll be joining with the DOE and the Rutgers Center to receive training, to get auditing tools for our mental health and wellness programs for kids, to share what we know with the other partner districts and learn from them. And so that'll commence in the 23, 24 school year, and we just look forward to taking part in that as a, as just a way to continue to ensure that our programs are accommodating all of the wellness, well-being, mental health, belonging needs that our kids have. So Danielle Zerowicki and the Counseling Department are going to be deeply involved in that, along with lots of other folks here. Two other things to highlight really quickly. On the personnel agenda, you see that one of our teachers, Laura Wright, is going to be attending a national conference on world, Conference of World Languages Teachers. This is the national conference. She's actually been selected to present at that conference. The various strategies that she has to foster belonging in the world languages classroom, she's going to be presenting there to colleagues across the country. So that's a great distinguish, a great distinction for, for an already distinguished department, our world languages department, you'll recall, as a model program a couple of years ago from the State Department of Education, so we're really proud of her there. I also want to share that Denise Spina, who's one of our media specialists here in this space, has been selected from candidates around the world to participate in a Google Champions Summit. So she'll be joining other experts in the use of Google Apps for Education to learn, experience some new innovative tricks and tips, and just get an inside view on some Google operations and share what she knows. Under Mr. Roberto, who is the supervisor here in the Media Center, who reports up to Mrs. Candelosi-Hayde, really been pushing the frontier of technology use in really wonderful ways in the district over the past couple of years, and it all starts in this space. So we're really pleased about that. So we go into the year with a lot of good news, and Jessica's report tonight is no exception. So I'll turn it over to you, Jessica.
Okay. Okay. Good. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Dr. Moore was correct. We have three reports that I tried to shrink into one and maybe relate to one another this evening. I'm presenting to you on our NJGPA, the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, which is now the graduation assessment requirement for the state of New Jersey that students take in 11th grade. I'm also presenting to you on the Access for Ls Assessment. That's assessing communication and comprehension in English, state to state, for English language learners. And then we'll also talk about graduation pathways, which gives our graduation percentage as well as the pathways or the ways in which they met the graduation requirement. So I'm going to begin, and you do have a copy, a printed copy for you. I did two slides, just in case you wanted to look at that instead of the screen. So we'll talk about the NJGPA first. Again, the NJGPA is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. This is given to our students in grade 11, and it is now the primary pathway to graduation in terms of meeting the state's graduation assessment requirement. You may recall from my presentation last year that the Board of Education for the state adopted this as a requirement September of 2021, and this was a move, kind of, it kind of goes back towards when we offered the 11th grade HESPA, HSPA, or the HSPT. But this was a move away from the NJSLA, if you recall, or the PARC assessments, which were course or subject, subject-specific. And this is important, it's an important fact because it is a little bit different. The 11th grade NJGPA assesses students mainly based on ELA Grade 10 standards. Now, in English Language Arts, as you've heard from our supervisor, Mr. McIsaac, English builds year after year, so usually that's not as problematic. Where I see being more problematic is in math. The NJGPA is based on Algebra I and Geometry standards. So this is presupposing that all students in March of grade 11 have completed geometry. And in fact, we do have students who have not completed geometry at that time. So that's why I bring up that point to you all. You also may recall last year that I talked about the difference in reporting with the NJSLA and PARC. We used to get five levels of proficiency, with level four and five being proficient or exceeds expectations. And then for the NJGPA, we now just have two levels that are reported out, and they can be in what I would consider to be somewhat harsh language. You're either graduation-ready or you're not yet graduation-ready. And I just want you to take a moment to think about that kind of language that's used, and you're a parent or a student receiving a letter over the summer saying you're not yet graduation-ready, when in fact you may have other assessments, grades that show, I thought I was graduation-ready. So I do want that to sit with us all just for a moment. Last year, you will recall that for, in, in July of 2022, this, they determined that the spring NJGPA was going to be a field test. And so therefore, our seniors who just graduated did not have this as a graduation requirement. However, the state assures us that it will indeed be a graduation requirement for this coming year seniors, the class of 2024, and those are the results we're presenting on this evening. Now, the good news with that is our results look good. The bad news with that is we're, there's still a big black box, that we like to say, in terms of what actually does the NJGPA test on, how in-depth do they go into certain standards. I also want to point out, I did put the scores next to what scores qualify as graduation-ready. Last year, the state set a high bar of 750. This year, they moved it to 725. And so that was helpful. It was helpful in different ways. On average in the state, it increased the English Language Arts proficiency by a large margin, whereas with math, it only increased it by about five percentage points. So you'll see that when we look at our results. So without further ado, we will look at our overall results first as compared to the state. Now, this is the percentage of students who were reported by the state as being graduation-ready. You see, English Language Arts, wow, 91%. State average, 81%. And for math, 70%. State average, 55%. So we will review longitudinal data, but they are increases from the previous year. English had a huge increase. Last year, they were at six, no, I'm sorry, 57%, and this year, 91%. And again, it's hard, you know, I think our teachers do a fantastic job. I'm sure that has a lot to do with it, but that's a large jump, and so we don't know, did they change the questions? Did they change the level of rigor in terms of the standards? And the same thing goes for math. Statewide, they're talking about, you know, we did have an increase. Some schools did not see an increase. And so schools are talking about, why was there an increase in English Language Arts and not as much in math? And so those are continued discussions because it is a newer assessment. But overall, our results look very good. The state also does require, and you'll probably recall this from my prior presentations, the state requires us to compare subgroups. So we'll go through some of those subgroups now. So the first subgroup that I have up there is by gender. We report, in this particular slide, male and female. I'm happy to say the state does now report out on non-binary, but the end for reporting is 20, and we did not hit that end of 20. So in this case, I'm reporting on male and female. So this is something to celebrate. I do not know if you recall, we did have gender gaps last year. We had about 15% between males and females in math, with males being higher than females. And in English Language Arts, it was almost opposite, about 10% where females were ahead of males. So you see, we're starting to close those gaps more. I don't want to only use this. This is not the only marker we use to see for closing gaps, but it's good to see that on this particular comparison. I'm now going to switch over to race and ethnicity as a subgroup that we must compare, and so, and I'm, I realize I'm blocking people, so I do apologize. So you will see, I mean, this is, this is what we're used to seeing, and it's unfortunate that we see our Black or African-American students lower performing than the average, as well as our Hispanic or Latino students. What I would say about this is that in math, these are about the same that they were last year. In general, each group increased slightly, but the gap didn't necessarily close as much as we would have liked to see. In English Language Arts, there was a large increase overall, but remarkably, we had Hispanic students, their percentage of students that were graduation-ready went up 35%. Our Black students went up 45%, and our white students went up about 35%. So some subgroups really had large increases. We're not, who's to say why? We're not sure. Is it that we have more inclusive texts? You know, is it that we've incorporated choice materials into the English Language Arts curriculum? We don't know that yet. We can't say for sure, but it's something to look at. It's another point of data. Next, our subgroup is going to compare our student programs, and these are things like free and reduced lunch, students with IEPs, which is Individualized Education Plans and 504 Plans, and then our English Language Learners. So again, these are things we've seen before, that we see our economically disadvantaged students, our students with disabilities, especially those with IEPs performing lower than their peers. And it is disappointing, but I did want to point out that in math, our students with 504s, the percentage that were reported as being graduation-ready has increased. And in English Language Arts, every single subgroup actually increased. So that, that's a positive. And again, who's to say why, but it is good that we have this data and we can compare it with our other data that we have, PSAT, SAT, Lincoln, that we use, as you know, in English and math, as well as course grades. Next, I just wanted to give you just a comparison, because I know we're still, even though COVID feels far behind us, thankfully, we do still wrestle with, do we have learning gaps? How are we doing with that when we had that kind of interruption to our learning in our regular school day? And so I do want to caution you, this isn't apples-to-apples comparison, and so let me just take a moment, if you wouldn't mind, to explain what we see down here. I go back to the 2017 PARC assessments, and the reason why I have 2017 and 2018 on there is that's last one we assessed 11th grade students in PARC. Now, it's a little bit different, especially with math, because this is a conglomerate of the different math courses that those students took, including Algebra II. So that's why I say it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but it's still a marker that we use. So the reason 2019 isn't there is because, again, we didn't offer it to our 11th grade students. And then in 2020 and 2021, there was a waiver, and we didn't do testing in those years due to COVID. So we picked back up last year in 2022 with the NJGPA. So you can see that we've had quite an increase in both areas. So even if you account for the tests were different, which they were, there still is a good enough increase there to show that we are still making gains, we are accelerating. And I attribute this to the remarkable work of our teachers and our supervisors, who are working with the kids every single day. And then, oop, okay. So I did want to talk a little bit about successes and then also talk about interventions, how we're using this data, what are we doing now that we have this? So of course, we're proud to see continued growth in our proficiency and in our achievement. Those, in particular, those subgroups that I talked about, we're proud to see that. But we're also not ignoring the ones that haven't had as much of an increase or that decreased. The thing that we're really proud of in each, the state gives a breakdown of each individual standard and skill on these tests, and we show improvement on every single one, and we are at, or probably in most cases, above the state average, which is really important. And that's the important work that our supervisors and our teachers do when they break down this test data. They're looking at it standard by standard, skill by skill. Again, I want to stress that we don't just use NJGPA data alone. This is the unfortunate part of the state, having a single assessment requirement to, in order for students to graduate, because that is not what we do as educators. We use multiple sources of data, not just a single high-stakes test. And I want to again thank the board for working with School Boards Association and the state to try and press them on why are we doing just a single assessment like this to determine students' graduation readiness? We use what's called the multi-tier system of supports that's required in the state of New Jersey. And what that means and what that looks like in terms of using this data is teachers will apply a tier-one intervention, which means they're just doing things in class with students. Things that you wouldn't even necessarily refer to as a strong of a word as an intervention, but that actually is what it is. So whether it's reteaching, it's taking a student aside and just doing a quick tutorial with them, those are all level-one interventions that our teachers are doing day in and day out. We also have what's called RTI, Response to Intervention, which is considered a tier-two. It's a step above, meaning the teacher has stepped in, we've seen some progress, but we'd like to see a little bit more. What, what can we do that's a little more intensive for a student? And so that involves our English and math teachers going into, either going into the classes with the students and working with them in small groups or individually, or pulling them out. And we also have Math Lab, where students can visit during study hall, and they can work with the teacher then as well. Primarily in math, we've been using our iXL software, which we were able to purchase with our, our ESAR funds, which has been really fantastic. It's able to drill down to skill and standard level to really assess a student's knowledge on that, probably more so than an assess, a state assessment does. And then in English Language Arts, we've been using our Common Lit platform and been aligning targeted practice materials, frequent targeted practice materials that were developed in conjunction with the grade 11 teachers. We have tutorials, as you know, Block Five. We've also been offering after-hours and evenings. Starting in the spring, we did that, especially in preparation for the assessments, to give students a little additional support and review. And this summer, we also offered a targeted math summer program, because you saw our proficiency, our proficiency rate, or graduation readiness rate, I should say, and math was at 70% versus English at 91, so we wanted to offer those students a little more support if they needed it in the summer. We are continuing to work in our departments on common assessments and mitigating for instructional learning gaps and all curricular revisions, many of the projects that you've approved, which we greatly appreciate. And to give you a sense of what are we, like, what does that mean? So in math, for example, we saw from this assessment, students had the most difficulty and the most challenge in modeling and reasoning. So we will continue now, we've integrated, so some summer project work has been integrating that more into the curriculum, whether it's additional practice, additional problems, finding good resources for students. Those are things we then put into the curriculum, so that it's not just we're handing out a worksheet. I know people don't really do worksheets anymore, but handing out a practice set on modeling and response, that it's really infused within the curriculum. In English, we've seen a lot of gains in reading, but in particular, we see some struggles with literature versus informational text. I believe Mr. McIsaac spoke about that last, this past fall or winter, when he presented as well. So we continue to think about, how can we bring in more nuanced language, more figurative language into the curriculum, finding resources and engaging resources to continue to close that gender gap especially? So those are some of the examples of the work that the departments are doing. We also, through our articulation work with our KDA8 sending districts, we continue to look at our programming, and in particular, we've been looking at our math program. So you may recall, at the beginning of this, I said the switch to the NJGPA was a little problematic in terms of students who maybe hadn't fully completed geometry. So they're taking the assessment while they're in geometry. And so that is a result of us also having a two-year Algebra I program for some students. And so what we've done next year is modified our programming in conjunction with the middle school, so that they can then modify their programming to offer a more intensive and supportive Algebra I, so that students can complete an Algebra I in one year, and then in their second year, complete geometry, so that then they've had that full gamut of standards in preparation for the NJGPA. Now, I do want to note, in grade 11 in English Language Arts, when we look from a programmatic perspective, we have many different options, if you've looked at our Program of Studies, for 11th graders and 12th graders. But remarkably, we've had, we have about one-third of our juniors take AP or honors, which is amazing, most, and in particular, AP English Language, I don't want to mess this up, AP English Language dot composition, just AP English Language, I believe. And in most other schools, that's about 10 to 20%. So we're making sure we integrate this into our AP English as well, not just, you know, the, the lower levels of the courses or our Learning Center courses, but we're doing it all around. And then we're continuing to work with our KDA8 sending districts to make sure that it's not just hitting students when they get here, that they can implement that in middle school as well. Just one note, that all of this is good, but the state is set to revise English Language Arts and Mathematics standards in September. So in about a few weeks, the State Board of Education will likely be approving revised standards in those areas. So we will then, they're not drastically different, but there, there are some ramifications, good maybe, perhaps, but we will then have to revise some of our programming. And I don't know what that also does for the graduation proficiency assessment as well. That remains to be seen. So that is our NJGPA. Do you want me to pause for?
So one or two quick things that I want to point out, and then we can pause there if there are any questions about those, knowing that you still have two more topics to cover.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, but that's the, this is the mediest one.
Yes, it is.
Got it.
Okay.
And I appreciate, thank you, Jessica, and I appreciate your reluctance to draw a conclusion. Yeah, but that's the, this is the mediaist.
Yes, it is, it is.
And I appreciate, thank you, Jessica, and I appreciate your reluctance to draw conclusions, right? Because what often happens with state tests, and it's frustrating, is they leave us with questions that we then have to give other tests to answer. And that's where, you know, we do the PSAT. We put a lot of stock in the PSAT. PSAT will come up in October. And when we get those scores back, like we did last year with Start Strong scores, we'll be able to kind of give you some more dimensioning here. But I will tell you, in English, I understand and appreciate your reluctance. I'm not reluctant to say that the choice that we give to kids in our English program leads to the engagement and belonging that leads to the achievement. I'm not at all sort of reluctant to assert that. And that's always been a hallmark of our program here. And I think it has always shown in our, in our scores. I think that's it. Are there other questions on GPs?
I just have a quick question. So how do we handle or work with our students who aren't, you know, test takers, who are brilliant in other ways, but taking a test doesn't capture what they've learned?
For sure. I mean, I would almost argue that about any student, even a student who's a good test taker, does it really capture what they learned and can do? So we offer tutorials, but there are, and I will talk about this in a little bit in the presentation, there are other pathways to graduation. And so that's where we have typically seen students shine through these other pathways. You'll, I will talk about it, but our, some of these students, we just received these results at the end of June. And some of our students already satisfied the graduation requirement through SAT or PSAT. So that takes care of that. And then at the end of the day, a student can submit a portfolio, which probably should be the primary method that we assess students, but it's just too difficult logistically for the state, where they do get to show off kind of what they learn and they get to explain their answers and kind of really show their thought process through math or through English Language Arts.
Jess, I just had a quick question. How are these scores communicated to parents? Does it come directly from the state or does it come through the district? Do we have an opportunity to soften the blow with a cover letter to explain?
We do have a cover letter. The state has some language that we have to include in the cover letter, but we add some additional things saying that, you know, just the supports that we offer, that there are other pathways that they can take to graduation. But in speaking with some parents this summer, there really is not a good way to soften a blow that the report that they get from the state, which is what I, I know people don't like to read four or five paragraph letters, so they look right at the report and it does say, not yet graduation ready. So that is difficult.
That report is attached to our letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about with the Start Strong test from the state last year.
Yes.
None of the categories were sort of, you did it. You know, they were all sort of, you need some level of additional support.
Yes.
And so we found ourselves having to soften some of that language. But ultimately, the language is what it is on those reports.
Yes, yes. All right, so I will move over to our ACCESS assessment. So again, the ACCESS for L's, I'm going to give an overview. Again, it stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English, state to state, for English language learners. Before I continue, I did want to make a note that the state recently made an update to its bilingual education code. And so starting in August, they said, through this school year, we are transitioning from using the term English language learner to multilingual learner. So you'll hear us now begin to use that terminology. It's more assets-based terminology. Now, unfortunately, the assessment we use is, because it's not a state assessment, it's through a consortium called WIDA. It still says ACCESS for L's. So there, we do have to grapple with that. But anything that we have that comes through the state will be transitioning to multilingual learners. So I wanted to familiarize you with that, with that language. So as I just mentioned, the ACCESS is an assessment developed by WIDA. WIDA is a consortium. It's used by 41 states, New Jersey, one of them, that develops tools and in particular, assessments to measure English language learning. And again, they do call it English language learning. This is a required assessment for multilingual learners. We give it every year typically around February, so early spring for the students. It is measuring proficiency in speaking, listening, reading and writing. And students also get an overall composite score. And we give this because this is counting toward the government's requirement for federal accountability. So for the every student succeeds ask, it meets our federal accountability requirement there. I do want to note, again, this is not an achievement-based test. It's just measuring proficiency. And especially here at Central, because we only have students for four years, you'll see the difference kind of in the proficiency levels. So it doesn't mean anything bad or good. It's just measuring proficiency. And the way this test is read, it's proficiency on six levels. It's a whole number followed by a decimal. So one is the very beginning phase is entering and six is reaching, meaning they've really developed independent language. The state requires a 4.5 for the students to exit a multilingual learner program. Historically, the state likes to see growth. They ask for a goal of growth from a student from year to year of .5. And we'll talk about that more momentarily. I did just give some language on what do those levels mean. I like to give everyone an idea of what does that mean for a student who's a newcomer, which most of our multilingual learners are? What does that mean in terms of a 4.5? And so you can see between a level four and five, expanding and bridging, is that really they have complex language and they're really well-versed with technical or specialized language. And so imagine that as someone who's just learning to speak English, that is the expectation to exit. Of course, we would never expect to have this within one year. The state looks at five years. And so because we're a four-year school, we don't ever have our students for five years. It makes it a little bit difficult. Just an example, so you can see the score report. They are scaled scores and they do give like a margin of error for the, for the students and their families. And then these are the proficiency levels that we're looking at. So I will break down the results for you. If you recall with NJGPA, we did discuss subgroups. Now, our multilingual learners are a subgroup and for reporting purposes, the N has to be a 20. So we're reporting on their proficiency levels here. And then I've broken it out by male and female, so you can see that there. Again, this is not achievement. This is just telling you where their language levels are. So you'll see we have like a pretty even distribution here between levels one, two and three. And this is grades nine to 12. I apologize because I didn't say this before. This is all English language learners or multilingual learners, as we now call them. Here, here gives you maybe a better idea of progress. And again, I wanted to do something similar to what we did with the NJGPA. This is more apples to apples because this is the ACCESS for L's assessment every year. So 2019 was pre-COVID, obviously, and then coming in with most recent 2023. You'll see, we are a little bit lower than we were pre-COVID. It's not statistically significant, though. On the graph, it looks, on that chart there, it looks that way because that this, between each horizontal mark here, horizontal line, is a decimal point. So really, we're separated by tenths. But you will see there is one area where we did have a little growth and that is in reading. Again, not statistically significant, but we are beginning to see growth. And I'll talk about that in just a little bit. What we really want to look at is individual student growth. If you recall, I said the state's requirement is for .5 per year. So our average growth this year of all of our multilingual learners, which was approximately 100 who took the assessment, I want to say it was 97, was a .26, which is not a .5. However, you can still meet your federal accountability requirement if you don't hit the .5 growth. And so we have met the federal accountability requirement. And that's usually based on a calculation of what you've got in the year prior. And so because we were close, that's how you can meet the federal accountability requirement without hitting the .5 growth. One of the things on the right, the far right column, that's really interesting to look at, is the number of students showing growth of .5 or more. And I will explain to you why this is significant. We can only show growth in students who were here the year before. And typically, our multilingual learner students are a transient population. And in fact, usually, we have more not returning than we do have returning. And so if you look at the N in all of those, those are the number of returning students. So you see, we had 32 during COVID. We did have a decrease in our program. So the, the N was 15 in terms of returning students. Last year, 48, but this year, 71. So that's an important marker just in terms of the retention that we have for our multilingual learners, which I do think it is, is an important takeaway. But you can see in terms of growth, 31% of those 71 had a .5 or more. Of course, would we love to see a 100%? Yes, we would, but we are not there yet. And so just as we don't use only the NJGPA, we don't use only our ACCESS for, to determine growth and progress through our program. So let's talk a little bit about our successes and our interventions. Again, we did have a great number of students returning in our retention rate. That really says a lot, especially toward our equity, equity policy, the work you all did in the counseling policy for students' sense of belonging and feeling safe. I think that has a lot to do with it. But one of our great prides and our great successes, which may not show in these results yet, is Spanish literacy data. So you may recall Dr. Arredondo speaking to you all last year about a newer Spanish literacy program, the ENEAL, that we had implemented. And this measures students, just as you would in a, like, an English Language Arts program for English speakers, native English speakers. It measures their reading growth through reading levels. And so 100% of our students showed growth of at least one reading level, which is phenomenal. We actually had five students go up two levels and one student go up three levels. So when I talk about other markers of data, that's one of the markers of data we use as well. We are continuing, just as I talked about data meetings in English and math, same thing here with ESL and Bilingual Language Arts. They continue to meet. And we also bring in our subject area ESL teachers. So our science teachers, our math, we bring them into the conversations as well so that we can really hone in on areas of focus. We continue to do those interdisciplinary correlations. And one of the ways that we've been kind of doing this and also bringing in student engagement and their sense of belonging is reintegrating our YPAR projects that we've done. YPAR stands for Youth Participatory Action Research. So this past year, we had two teachers participate in a program through Rutgers. They were accepted to learn exactly that, how to integrate more YPAR. And our supervisor, Dr. Arredondo, has been deeply involved in this. She did her dissertation on YPAR and she is involved in the Rutgers project as well. But perhaps the great part of it is, in the spring, the teachers were able to bring our students there, our multilingual learner students to Rutgers, which is, which was wonderful for them, wonderful for them, not only to learn about the program, but to have access to Rutgers, to have access to those professionals and educators there. It was a really good experience for them. So we will continue with that. Just as we have tutorials, like I talked about in English and math, we also have these available for our multilingual learners. So we have an after-school program and we also have a Saturday morning program, believe it or not, as well as summer courses for them. So I'm going to pause there before we move on to the last. And this is the shortest, I'll say that.
This one coming up.
I'm sorry. This one coming up is the shortest. It's like three slides.
You're doing great, Jess.
Thank you. Thank you. We're good? All right. Okay, next and last, we will talk about graduation pathways. And this again, is a required report we give each year. And this reports out on the graduation rate, but also the means in which the students reach that graduation requirement. The state has an assessment requirement and that's what I put up here. And I put this up here for a reason. There are three different pathways, as Mrs. O'Donnell, as we just talked about, but it has changed somewhat and I wanted to point out those changes. The first pathway is now the NJGPA, as I mentioned. And it's important to know, the students have to take the NJGPA in order to access and be allowed to use something in the second and third pathway. So that is important for everyone to know. Probably most disappointing, in the second pathway, it does look like, wow, there are a variety of assessments that students can use. And there are. However, they removed the ASVAB, which is a military aptitude test that we had traditionally given some students and they satisfied their graduation requirement that way. And they also removed the NJSLA, which is extremely disappointing because sometimes that was the one thing that helped a student. So you know, if they didn't meet, if they weren't graduation ready in 11th grade, they had already met it through NJSLA in prior grades. So that is no longer there. And so we don't know what impact that will have because this is the first year we're really, we're seeing this through. The third pathway is a portfolio appeal. And again, that's that more personalized one-on-one approach where we meet with students either during their math class, during their study hall, during tutorial, whatever time we can get them to help them build a portfolio showing that they have mastered, you know, critical standards within the content. So now I'll talk about our pathways. They're really, we don't, we can't really break out the pathways because if you recall, there was no requirement for the NJGPA last year. So we had 627 students who were graduation ready either through NJGPA or through an alternate proficiency assessment or they had multiple pathways. It didn't really matter because the state waived that requirement. We had 37 students who did not graduate. And I want to point out that more often than not, it is not because they didn't pass one of the state assessments. It's usually because they failed, they failed an assessment or they have too many absences. They failed a course, they didn't retake a course, whatever it may be. So that's usually the reason that a student would not graduate. So our graduation rate for the state is 94.1. And for federal, this is a new reporting requirement, is 94. And I will briefly explain the difference for you. We have a small group of students, special education students, who do not qualify to take our NJGPA and instead they take something called the Dynamic Learning Maps. They are able to satisfy their graduation requirement in that way. But then the state, for a long time, had had, had had something in the code that allowed students to be exempt from passing the assessment. They had to take the assessment, but they didn't have to pass it and could satisfy it in another way. The federal government has now said, if you do that, we're going to count them as not graduating. So in this case, that accounts for the .1 difference there because we had just a very few amount of students who were exempt from one of these other assessments. But therefore, the state said, okay, they graduated and from federal purposes, they did not recognize it in that way. So those are our counts for graduation. And I told you this was short, that really is it. But traditionally, just so you know, our graduation rate does sit between 94 and 95. So we are on track, really not tragically affected by COVID, as you may have seen in other school districts. So that concludes my long presentation. Presentations, yes. And I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Does the 37 that didn't graduate, does that include students who might go for a different path like GED?
It does, yes. And I actually found out there's two students in there who transferred out of Central prior to graduation. But because they could not be verified at wherever they transferred to, they counted against us as well.
Yeah, so there are different graduation pathways within the school. Then outside of the school, there's also GED and other pathways. But yeah, anyone who doesn't graduate the traditional pathway or through those alternative pathways that she, that Jessica mentioned, yeah, would be among those 37. But they can still find success through the other pathways available, through GED and some other, some other avenues.
And it's not to say they won't graduate. We do have students then who, who continue. They'll do credit recovery or whatever it may be for the one or two courses they failed that prevented them from graduating. And then, you know, hopefully, our goal is to get them all to graduate if that's also their and their family's goal.
Thank you, Jessica.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And so with that, I will just remind that we have a few organizational items to adopt, to approve rather, after the first residence forums. And with that, and thanks for your patience and your attention and your good questions, turn it over to Mrs. Hughes.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So with that, we'll move into our first residence forum, which is for items on the agenda, action items that the board is voting on tonight. We will have a second residence forum for general comments later. Okay, then we'll move into our organizational items. Can I have a motion, please, to adopt all curricula for the 2324 school? Can I have a motion, please, to adopt all curricula for the 23-24 school year, including the three new classes, Introduction to Broadcasting, Cybersecurity II, and Biomedical Sciences IV?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just had a question. Because I was noticing that some of, and obviously, some of our curriculum lists NA under instructional items. The only reason I brought this up is because we are mandated to include instructional items, some at least, a minimum level in our curriculum. Dr. Moore, I know you said that you couldn't find it anywhere in our policies. Policy 2200 says our curriculum shall at a minimum include the curricular mandates of NJAC 6A. That in itself says the District Board of Education shall provide instructional tools, including but not limited to, a pacing guide, a list of core instructional materials, including various levels of text at each grade level, benchmarks, assessments, and modifications. And it's also repeated again under Standards-Based Instructions under NJAC 6A 13-2.1. So I'm, I didn't quite, I never quite got a full answer on that. But I'm going to hope that that is going to be included before it gets published, to have some sort of, at least base, I mean, it's a very low bar to have something. But as a board, we don't have the authority or the, to be able to waive one of those off. So I'm just asking, is that going to be included before publishing to at least have some core instructional materials for each of these classes?
So, and I know we had, and I thank you for the correspondence on this. The district has always looked at textbooks as meeting that requirement. Our curriculum guides have gone successfully through every state review that they've been put through. There's a, every three years, we go under a review from the state, and it delves deeply into our curriculum guides to make sure that they all have the required components. The state has never turned any of our curriculum guides away from that review. In fact, our guides are used often as models throughout the state with other districts. So we feel comfortable, given the current policy that we have and the work that we've been doing with the state, to say that the textbook that we identify fulfills that requirement and that we are then allowing, under the resources policies that we have, our teachers to make the decisions they need to make on a day-to-day basis to adjust those resources.
But some of ours don't have a textbook or anything listed.
Correct. So a textbook is not required. And again, the state has not batted an eye at the notion that our teachers are in the position to make informed, trained, expert decisions about what they need to bring into the class on any given day.
And I certainly don't disagree with that, but I'm just saying, as a board, it says the board shall. So that doesn't say that we have, just as a board, we have to abide by the administrative code as it is written. And so, you know, I think it's important to at least put some sort of something in each course just because otherwise, we are not fulfilling our mandate per the New Jersey Administrative Code, which comes directly from the Department of Education.
So I appreciate that. And I think this is a good conversation for the Student Life and Program Committee to have as we dig into some of those requirements. I can tell you, though, again, I'll reiterate, every three years, the state does a comprehensive review of the district's compliance. That's, that is the tool that they use each, each three years. The CUSAC tool to determine whether or not we are compliant with all of those requirements. And, you know, we've passed that, not only passed that, but been designated as an exemplary district who has, which has materials that should be shared with other districts who are in not as good shape as us. So I'm not concerned about the accountability there, but it's certainly a conversation that we can, we can have in the Student Life and Program Committee.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? I think we had a motion and a second on that, right? Yes, okay. So can you take a roll call vote, Mrs. Spitzer, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Abstain.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt all textbooks for courses for the 23-24 school year that are on file in the Office of the Superintendent?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill?
O'Donnell.
Yes.
I don't know where that came from, I'm so sorry. Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
And I just want to clarify, all of the textbooks aren't in Dr. Moore's office. A list of the textbooks are in Dr. Moore's office. And lastly, on organizational items, can I have a motion, please, to adopt the Chapter 27 Emergency Virtual Remote Instruction Program for the 23-24 school year?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, that concludes organizational items. We'll move right on to Student Life and Program Committee. Mr. Davidson, I would ask, based upon Mrs. Peterson's comments that we put on next month's agenda, a discussion of what we started here tonight for SLP? Perfect, thank you.
In fact, I'd like to meet with her just to get reinforced on this after, after this meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Student Life Committee meeting has only five items on the agenda, which will please everybody this evening. The first one is tuition and transportation for special ed students. There's four of them, and we have to fund and approve their being sent out to the proper and selected special education schools. So I'd like to move that. We have an abolished policy that we have a second reading on. We discussed it previously. This is a policy that became obsolete on student employment working papers, and we want to drop that. Our third item is we want to approve joining the McKinney-Vento Education of Homeless Children program to collaborate with that when it's necessary for us to do that. The fourth item is a agreement to have us use the Hunter and Healthcare School-based Youth Services Program, which is a wonderful thing. It's additional resources that we can use over and above what we have within the district. And it's very powerful because it's using the professionals at Hunter and Healthcare when we, when we need them, all right? And we need to have this agreement signed for them to agree to, to provide them. And finally, this is a list of the fiscal impact of the District Professional Development Program. Our professional development program has already been approved in item by item based on the program that it was connected to. Here, what we've done is relist them just in order so that you can get one idea of the total financial impact rather than just having each one listed separately and approved. This is, we've already, this isn't something we don't know about already for the first time. This is a relisting of what has been approved previously by the board. So that's it. So I'd like to move these five items, items one through five.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion about SLP committee items? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Spitzer?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan? Mr.? Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. Operations and Transportation, Mr. Fowler's absence. Mrs. Duggan, you're going to provide the report, please? Thank you.
So we only have six items on our list as well today. The first one is approving the financial report for the month ending June 2023. The second and third are invoices and transfers, final June and then July, I guess. Basically, what we do is you true-up the following month. So next month, it'll be final July with August. And then we'd also like to approve a scheduled service agreement with Train, who is the proprietary service for our train cooling systems on our campus. The fifth item is to approve the tuition contract agreement with the Hunter and County Polytech. We have 153 students who will be attending for the 2023-24 school year. And the last one is move to approve or execute a contract with Orishore Technologies, which is for drug testing. And this is actually a significant savings for drug testing from, from what we've been paying to date. So with that, I'd like to move items one through six.
Thank you, Mrs. Duggan. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Bloodfield, please.
Personnel wins out again with the most items on the agenda. I think I should be able to get through them pretty quickly, though. Start out, we have one, retirement. Denise Holesley, after 25 years of service. So we'd like to wish her well in retirement. We have three resignations. One of them, Kevin Cust, you will see, he's resigning as a power professional. And then in item number three, we are appointing him for our last open business teacher position. And that leaves us now fully staffed for our school opening. We also have three duty release aides and replacement for Ms. Holesley. Item four, we have four subs for the per diems. For five, we have our hourlies, including mentor buddies for new teachers, paid for with grants, and then overtime for the staff that's working at the back-to-school nights. We have the appointment of substitute bus drivers. In seven, we have curriculum writing for the coming school year. That includes two items. One is for the Honors English Dual Enrollment Program. And the second one is for German II, and that's to adapt the curriculum to account for smaller blended sections due to the declining enrollment in German. Then we have the approval of the athletic event workers. Nine and 10, we have the appointment of the AM/PM supervision and special services AM/PM supervision. We have PM security in number 11. 12, we have new staff induction, buddy stipends, paid for with grant money. And then in 13, we are rescinding one appointment. We had one summer school teacher who was unable to participate. So then you'll see later, the co-teacher got more hours. 14, 15, 16, we just have some of our reappointments, substitute teachers, substitute secretaries, substitute custodians. We have, for 17, sixth block stipend for two of our Spanish teachers. These are teachers who were grandfathered under our old contract, where they get paid to teach a sixth block. Then we have our professional development conferences. Dr. Moore pointed a couple of those out. 19, curriculum and instruction professional development instructors who get paid at our tier-three contracted rate. In 20, you'll see the professional development workshop attendees who get paid at tier-one rate. Then we have for 21, staff who's coming in to help with new student orientation. 22 and 23 have to do with the ASPIRE program. We are appointing an ASPIRE program associate. And that role will be to help with the development of case management and to work with the families to give them assistance. And then the program development is for staff who's teaching in the ASPIRE program so that they can come and help develop the curricular and other supports for the students. In 24, you'll see we have a student teacher from TCNJ in the Science Department, which is always great to see. We have a nice relationship now with TCNJ. 25, we have the unpaid Schedule C advisors listed. 26, we have two additional Schedule C coaches. And we have a few leaves of absences in 27. 28, we have the second reading on the Earn Sick Leave Law Policy. And then 29 is where you'll see the amendments, including the extra hours given to Deb Frank due to the rescinding of the other position. That's what's on the agenda to be approved tonight. In addition to that, we had a discussion about the changes to the sick leave law that will be expanding the allowable uses for sick days. And that's still being looked at, I guess. With that, I would like to move personnel items one through 29.
Thank you, Mrs. Bloodfield. And Mr. Reimer, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just want to thank you, Mrs. Bloodfield. Under number two, counselor resignation was new. That occurred after our meeting, and we wish her well. We have been in the process already of interviewing. We've been interviewing today, as a matter of fact, I believe. And so we, we may have a candidate for you before the start of the year. We have our retreat on the 28th. We may have a candidate that we can bring to you at that point. But we're not 100% sure yet. In any event, we have Ms. Coppola until October, so we have some time.
Thank you. I actually had a question. Under the athletic event workers, under eight, is Julie Nealon coming back to do that?
So we do have staff members who return or want to be on the list to return to do that, absolutely. So she's available. She can come in and do that.
Great.
Dr. Moore, a quick question about the new student orientation on the Tony Sack, I guess, for? Can you tell us a little bit about that, how it's structured?
So the new, so new staff orientation or new student orientation? Which one are we talking about?
Oh, this is new staff. Oh, for new student orientation. Yeah, I was kind of wondering what that was.
Freshman orientation? The staff that's coming for freshman orientation?
The staff that has, so the freshmen, and Mr. Brandt, I don't know if we, do you mind stepping up and sharing a little bit about what that date looks like? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
He's never on the spot.
For the new students, or it's basically the orientation's broken up over two sessions. So next Monday night, the ninth-grade parents and the ninth-grade students are invited for 6:30 next Monday night. The parents come to the auditorium for a presentation from a number of administrators welcoming them, while the students go down to the gyms and the cafeterias area for a social time to get to meet each other, get to meet some of the staff members, get to see some of the clubs that are available here, and just have some fun kind of informally. And then the next morning, the students come back. And from 8:30 to 12:30, they come back. They go into their Alpha homerooms like they would be on their very first day of school. And they go through some items there, then they go around in bigger groups, five different stations where they meet, you know, curriculum, I mean, I'm sorry, the counseling team, the house team, you know, athletics and activities. They come in here, they get their Chromebooks, and then they go back to their Alpha homeroom to kind of embed that first time they get off the bus, that's where they're going to go. But also, after that, there's a window of time where they get to walk their schedules because they also get their schedules that morning, too. So they get their schedules, their Chromebooks. They get a little introduction, a little bit of everything. And then they have time to kind of walk their schedules to figure out where they need to be those days. And then they get picked up by 12:30 in the two parking lots out here. All right, thank.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer.
Thank you.
One other thing, too. And part of that day, upper-class students who are transfers from other high schools are invited to be a part of that, a little separate from the ninth graders. They meet with our Red Devil ambassadors in a smaller group. Those are upper-class students to kind of give a little more student-to-student orientation. And they also get to walk their schedule. walk their schedules. Thanks.
I just have one other sort of a statement question. So Ms. Coppola is senior year counselor, right? And just to sort of confirm that all the college letters, everything will be done, probably most of it's done over the summer, right?
Yeah, a lot of it's done over the summer. There is some work to do now moving forward, but we'll, we have plans for spreading that out to others. Yeah.
Wanted to make sure, as parents are watching this and worried about their students who are seniors.
Thank you, Ms. Bloodfield. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote on personnel, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Reimer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mrs. O'Donnell, do we have an update on racism, equity, diversity?
We did not meet.
Okay.
Maybe next week.
Yes. Okay, so we'll have one next month?
Yeah.
Correct, great. Communications, Mrs. Kellogg, could you give us an update, please?
Sure thing. We met on August 9th at 10:30 in the morning via Zoom. Mrs. Peterson, Dr. Moore, Mrs. Tucker, and I were on the call. Essentially, we picked up our discussion of the end-of-year summary that Mrs. Tucker had put together, talking specifically about the tools that we use for communication, email, the website, HCTV, and social media. And we were looking for ways to put these things into policy. So we talked about the difference between push communications, meaning things that we need to distribute either for state mandates like fire drills and those sorts of things, or that we are required or need to communicate to parents and students versus things where we want to have pull communications, where the website or HCTV or our social media presence is going to pull people in that are interested in specific things. So Dr. Moore created a graphic that will be distributed within minutes. I apologize, I was traveling this week, and so was Dr. Moore, so we didn't get those final before the meeting. But the graphic basically goes through what things are going to be communicated by push communications versus what would be communicated with pull communications. And Mrs. Tucker also had a meeting that she'll update us on next month with different groups and club advisors about how to create a social media or basically rules of the road for approved social media accounts associated with Hunterdon Central. So I guess, Dr. Moore, is there anything else you want to add to that, or Mrs. Peterson?
No, that's good.
Thank you, Mrs. Kellogg. Any other committee reports or liaison reports from outside meetings? Nope, okay. Any additional board business? I just want to remind everybody that our retreat is next Monday, the 28th, from 4:00 to 8:00, right here in the IMC. Dinner will be served. If you haven't put your order in yet, to Mrs. Graham, please do so. We'll have a working dinner with Mrs. Wilson again. We'll now move into our second public comment. This is for general comments. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and municipality for the record. There should be a sheet up there to sign in. You have five minutes to speak. Dr. Moore will keep track of the first four minutes, then an alarm will go off, and you
So my name's Andrew Mitchley, and going into the new school year, I just kind of want to reiterate my support and my gratitude to the board and Dr. Moore, specifically for all they've done for our LGBT students. I'm a school psychologist and a case manager here at Hunterdon Central, so I have a lot of firsthand work with our students who have mental health issues. Is this working? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So it's been very challenging to support our students with the struggles of mental health that are so prevalent today, and that goes for all our students. Unfortunately, our LGBT students are far more likely to suffer from these issues, including depression and anxiety. When I was in grad school, one of the major problems we often discussed was the way to prevent bullying of our LGBT students from their peers. And, you know, since I was in high school and since I was in grad school, things have changed a lot. I'm very happy to say that being here at Central and working with our students, I've seen such an improvement for how our students care for one another, especially our LGBT students. But unfortunately, what I've been seeing a lot of and what I really hadn't expected was a lot of that bullying is now coming from adults within our community, whether it be social media posts or even comments they make at our meetings, at our board meetings. And so I never really thought I'd have to deal with that, but I'd like to ask those who are compelled to take action or spread hatred for our LGBT students to take a moment and think about how you are actually affecting them. These students are at higher risk of mental health issues, of suicidal ideation. When I was in grad school, I did a thesis on support for peer parental support for LGBT students. And what we found was that, you know, all these increased rates of depression and anxiety and suicidal ideation, they're all mitigated by having a supportive environment. That our LGBT students who are already at greater risk for killing themselves, for suffering from depression, for suffering from anxiety, those are mitigated by having a supportive environment. So if you want to support our LGBT students or just all our students, if you want to see decreases in depression and anxiety and suicidal ideation, all you have to do is treat them with respect. And if you can't find anything respectful to say, you can just stay quiet, and our students will get it off for it. So I know I've been here many times and said the same thing many times, but I just want to reiterate that to everybody. I want our LGBT students to know that their staff continues to support them. Thank you.
I would like to make a statement about the...
Could you please state your name and municipality?
Thank you. My name is, I've been here so many times, I'm sure y'all already know me. My name is Elliot Franklin. I live in Delaware Township with my grandmother, who is 96. And I sure would like to be at home with her, but instead, I have to be here to protect the trans youth. And I'm doing that because I was once a trans youth, and I didn't have anyone to protect me, and I don't want those kids to suffer the way I did. For some reason, this is a controversial issue. I'd like to talk about the Catholic Church tonight, since apparently being transgender is now a religion, according to the case that is being brought against the board. I sure wish it was, because then I'd have way more rights. Because as recently as, I don't know, probably the 60s, children were still being beaten for being ambidextrous and left-handed. I know this firsthand, because my dad, who went to this high school, was beaten when he was learning his letters, because he was ambidextrous. Catholic Church also propped up the transatlantic slave trade, something that strangely was not taught to me in high school. And finally, how about the forced conversion of the indigenous peoples of America, the rights of which those indigenous peoples did not get back until 1970? Oh, wait, sorry, 1978. So, man, it sure would be great if being trans was a religion, because I would have so many more rights than your average Catholic person. And that's all I have to say tonight, but I hope you can hear the anger in my voice, because I am getting increasingly annoyed that I have to come here and waste my time on this bigotry and nonsense that most of the board agrees with me about, but there's just a couple people who are a real thorn in my side.
Hi, my name is Bart Goldberg. I'm a 30-year resident of Raritan Township. I'm also a parent of a child who attended this school and graduated seven years ago and has a successful career since then. Went to RIT, has finished both his masters and his bachelor's there in computer science. I want to thank you all for the incredible support that you provided to my child, who is a trans child, in this school. I can't thank you enough. Because of the work that you guys have done and the environment that you've created, my child has been able to succeed and do really well. And I just want to thank you all and to let you know that there are members of this community who support that trans community and the help that you guys on this board that have provided the environment for him to thrive. And I wanted to just thank you all. Thank you so much.
Good evening, all. I would just like to talk about indoctrination today.
Can you please state your name and municipality? Thank you.
Jay Hoff, Flemington Borough. I just wanted to talk about indoctrination tonight, since that word gets thrown around an awful lot these days. And there's a certain crowd that seems to think that mentioning the existence of queer and trans people in and of itself is indoctrination, that recognizing that they exist, hello, is a fact. It's not a political ideology. It is not me forcing anything on you. It's just me doing my thing. But some of you may not know that I grew up in the evangelical church, and this person that you see before you did not exist two years ago, three years ago. I grew up at a church around here, very similar to the doctrine that you will see preached at Gateway Church in Raritan. And I knew from a young age that I was different, but I was taught to hate that difference and to suppress that difference at all cost. You know, everything from boys will be boys, girls are girls, that's it, there's no room for anything else, to you need to spread the word at all costs. I can't tell you how many times I went on mission trips, Dominican Republic twice, Kensington, Philadelphia, soup kitchens, anywhere. We were even those people who were on the boardwalk with the are-you-going-to-heaven test, and I told people they were going to hell. I was in some dude's random bachelor party photo album, smiling and holding signs saying, are you going to heaven? Because I believed that much at 16, 17 years old. I thought that that was who I was. I thought that that was the only way, the only way to Jesus, the only way to God, the only way to live. And so I rejected everything else. You know, evangelizing even to my friends and feeling accountable for their eternal salvation. And when one of my friends died in a terrible horrific accident, I felt bad because I didn't do enough to try to save her eternal soul. So talk to me about indoctrination, when I feel bad that my friend died and I didn't try to save her hard enough. Or tell me about indoctrination when there's a girl who was my friend, and in sixth grade, she broke down crying at one of my friend's birthday parties because she couldn't handle it anymore, that one of the clergy members at her church had been molesting her for years. We were in the seventh grade, a clergy member had been molesting her and probably others for years, but we couldn't tell anyone because it wasn't safe for her. So talk to me about indoctrination. Talk to me about indoctrination when I'm in my bathroom at seven years old and I hate myself so much that I wonder if I sit in that bathtub and I use my mother's razor, if it'll stain, if it'll stain the place I'm sitting in. So talk to me about indoctrination. I'll talk all day about it, because I know what it is, and some of you don't. Queer and trans people exist. They are part of this community that you have vowed to serve, and if you cannot do that, then you do not belong here. End of story. Thank you.
I'm Janet Quaterone. I live here in Flemington Borough. I don't have children myself in this school system, but I care about children, because I care about our community. I care about Flemington. I care about seeing it grow, true growth. And I know that that is what the educators and the people on the board should be committed to, and I think most of you are committed to. And I want to also say thank you for the mission statement and the striving toward equity and personalization that you have been working on as a board, thanks to the members that really support that and are working toward that, because true education is about growth, isn't it? Growth of mind, growth of critical thinking, growth of understanding of yourself and others and many other points of view. I hope that this year you can stay focused, or are allowed to stay focused, on your mission to serve the young people of the schools, that you do not have to be distracted by frivolous, fear-baiting, sensationalist lawsuits. I think about the pledge that we all stood and recited at the beginning of this meeting about liberty and justice for all, for all students, for all of their needs. And I think largely I'm speaking to the converted, and it's good that we come here at these moments when we think there's something about to happen or we want to make sure it doesn't happen, and we want to express our support to you or to express our condemnation or our concern about things that might be about to happen. But I'd like to suggest that for us in the community, we should find ways to communicate with each other outside of here, that we find ways to connect in our community and support each other and continue to keep each other informed. There are a few people that work very hard to do that, and I think more of us should rise to the occasion and support each other, support the board, support our students. Thank you.
Before we get started, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and...
Before we get started.
Name and municipality, please.
Okay. Jim Vargas, long-term resident of Raritan Township, currently reside in Almahad Beach.
Thank you.
But before we get started, this woman is excellent. I've watched many, many presentations, the value that she brings to the school, and many other people who've got here. She not only brings value, she brings hope. She's a real asset to your organization.
Thank you. We know that. I'm glad you recognize it, too.
It's hard not to.
[inaudible]
What? Okay, can you hear that? Let me try that. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you can start. There's obviously a lot of pain and a lot of difference of opinions going on here, and a lot of people that are using that pain and those different opinions to foster agendas. Okay? Recently, the Board of Ed's State just made some decisions on their equity laws, which caused a lot of differences of opinion, even from liberal state Democratic senators and congressmen that said they went too far. And some of the comments are about that, even though they set standards, they do not set the curriculum. The curriculum is done by locally-based school districts with parents' involvement. One of the things that go on around here is what I've seen, that one of the things that you asked... that you asked, excuse me. One of the things that you asked, Mrs. Hughes, is how do we get here during a heated department when things are going on? There's a book called Rules for Radicals, okay? Many people know it. People, you can call it leftist, you can call it socialist, you can call it New World Order, you can call it Sustainable Development Goals, you can call it whatever you want. But people that want to foster their agenda follow these rules. And here's what Olinsky said. You find the issue, you pulverize it, you freeze it, you personalize it, and then you pulverize it. You make people do what you want them to do. And I see a lot of that that's going on around here, that people that disagree or have a different view than the current administration get hammered. And the first one I'm going to start with is Paul Tanko. Paul Tanko, first of all, as a human being, he is a veteran. He is a 20-year member of the Rutgers Police Force, and he came here to serve here as security. He protects people. He took a picture of something, sent it around in a public school, and was chastised for it. That may be okay, but in the letter that was communicated from the superintendent to the board said he put children in danger. He did not. He protects children. Those are the type of things that go on here. Yet even things that go on here where Mrs. O'Donnell had put out a flyer one time or something on the thing that talked about the exposure of children that they weren't exposed to being converted by these type of, the new sex standards, right? Yet we know that 370 teachers were convicted last year of sex crimes against students. And we know big organizations like the Catholic Church go through exorbitant things to protect their children. It's real. And even the thing that goes on to where during the incident that we had with the woman being attacked during the demonstration on Roe v. Wade, that person's life was in danger. That is true, but not Paul Tanko. So the one thing I would ask you about that is, number one, I think you need to back off on this. He's coming back, but, and he should be talked, but he shouldn't be trained or say he did something wrong, certainly haven't, say, have his reputation trashed. But that's not the first time I've seen that, okay? We started down this road, I started coming a couple, a year ago here, right? And we started with this administration. First thing I noticed was that critical race theory was taught to all the students, or no, sorry, all the staff. Critical race theory in California implemented, the logging laws were repealed. Today, you can't stand on the street there. The public housing and the public health just tell their people, "Don't come to work, work from home because it's so dangerous." When you follow that through, things that went on here where, when they had the, okay, where they had some of the acts going on, more and more, whatever is left or woke is supported. And we're sitting here, whether it was, one of the things I'll bring up to is during Mr. Moore's, one of his reports, he mentioned, somebody had mentioned black fathers because, and we saw up here that blacks are struggling with the thing. Maybe that man was just saying that it was single parents, and that the black environment has more single parents than the average. The things that go on that come up here time after time, that people brought up that are different get trounced. Paul was one of them, people one of them goes, and we need to stop that. We expect the board, and you, Mrs. Hughes, as president, to lead that and let everybody have a say, and have a real, and have everybody represented and everybody talked about to this. And when we saw today, nobody, nobody wants to hurt trans students, nobody. But there is a difference between whether, you know, this type of sexuality should be taught in the school or not. And when you look at, these are the things that have to be done. People have to be treated fairly. But the way this administration going, it's not happening. I'll be back next time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
I'm from the neighboring Somerset County. Is this better?
Yeah.
All right, great. I wasn't actually planning on speaking tonight, but I wanted to address a few things. First of all, if you're taking, if you're giving credence to someone who doesn't even know that transgender is a gender identity and not a sexuality, then they don't know anything about the subject. Second of all, just going to point it out, referring to the New World Order is one of the oldest anti-Semitic conspiracy theories on the book. I also wanted to say that it's never been allowed for adults to take pictures of children in a public school without those children and their parents parental permission. Let's see, what else? Yeah, I guess I don't have any much else. I really appreciate what the board is doing and to support transgender youths in Manville, in the town where I am. Past year, a trans student took his own life because the school reneged on protections for transgender students and forced him back into women's bathrooms, and stopped using his names, and stopped intervening in bullying, and he tragically took his life. And that's what's at risk here. And I appreciate everyone fighting to keep the trans kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rosalie Efton. I live in the borough of Flemington. This issue does not affect me personally. I don't have kids in the school, I never did. I'm not queer, I'm not trans, I'm not gay. But I am tired of watching gay and queer and trans people, particularly young people, not be recognized and have to defend their lives. It must be exhausting, and I'm sorry. I read at least part of the statement from the law firm that has now sued you, and what I found in it was language that sounded to me full of smugness and imagined superiority, which represents the lawsuit and the people and the church that is driving it. Couple of things I wanted to pull out in the language from that statement. The word transgenderism, that choice of words, they speak of it more like it's a position, communism, federalism, or a belief, Catholicism, where they just have a different opinion or belief, and so their different opinion or belief is just as valid than what they say the district believes. And the district frankly is all of us, so I don't know how they get there. They don't speak of transgender people, so they don't have to be reminded that there are actual people behind this that are no less human and no less important to this community than they are. I assure you, there are people's actual lives behind those terms, friends of mine, people that I know, people that I'm related to. And I find that for people who don't question themselves on gender, who find the whole issue of gender easy for them, I did, but there are people who don't have those questions and don't have those struggles, and they think, some of them, that that means that they can just pass judgment on those who do. And that makes me sick for my community. And the imagined superiority because they're Christian or their sect says that it's okay to look down on people, it's just not. The statement in their statement, it raises transgenderism to the status of religion. What a choice of words that is. I get that religion's important to some of those people. That's fine. It's not important to me, and it's not important to a lot of people. And there are people whose religions teach them different things, like acceptance and recognition and love, not bigotry. They also speak in terms of parents' rights. And I think some of these folks don't understand that they are not the client as parents of this school system or any other public school system. The client is the community at large, and the community has all different kinds of people in it. And we all have a stake in that education, and we pay the bill, all the bills, for their children's education. If they don't like that, they can send their kids to religious or private schools on their dime. Thank you.
So it is now 8:40. We started public comment at 15, so we have time for one more speaker. Is there someone else who wanted to speak? If there's one other person who'd like to speak, that's fine.
Is there another one?
Is there another person? Okay, you can wait. Thank you. And then we'll close public comment after the next two speakers.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Gong. I live in Raritan Township. I'm a taxpayer. You've heard me before. I never really intend to speak, but actually tonight with most of the people here, I'm quite inspired to speak. Usually I'm enraged, but today I'm inspired. So first, I want to say thank you to the board for all of your hard work. I know you're not paid, but thank you so much, and good luck for the next year or so. So I ask you to bear with me as I say the following, as I follow that very eloquent speaker. I was also on the website of the law firm that I will not mention that is suing the board. So I just, again, just ask you to bear with me as I say the following. I do have hope for the future. I look at my two daughters. They are bright, they're funny, they're amazing, they are truthful. That is, they stand up for the truth, they ask the right questions. They are becoming upstanding citizens. They will do the right things. Well, hopefully they will. They're young, but, you know, hopefully they will. And I would like to think that they will hold people accountable for their actions. And finally, when my mother came to the United States from another country, she didn't speak a word of English. So let me just stop there. We have heard that when people disagree, that we actually have more in common than differences. What I just said to you is very similar to one of the lawyers who's suing this board, really almost word for word. Can you imagine? I spent a few minutes today listening to that person's interview on the website. Of course, I don't agree with everything on this law firm's website, but I was surprised that I could say very similar things. Now, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't understand all the discussions about violations of someone's First Amendment rights. But I do know that if you believe in your First Amendment rights, then you should stand up here and tell us what you believe. You should come here and stand here and tell the board, and tell the parents, and tell the community what you stand for and what you value, if you believe in your First Amendment rights. So please, please, as this law firm's website applauds, do not fly under the radar screen if you're going to sue the board. Come here and speak up for what you believe. I would find it so hypocritical if you believe in the First Amendment in the United States and in the United States that you would fly under the radar screen. Thank you.
All right. Hello, members of the board. I'm here for the same reason a lot of people are here tonight.
Excuse me, could you please just state your name and municipality?
My apologies. I'm Veriah. I live in a hybrid, and basic, and so essentially it seems that the people who have been complaining about the board's course in respecting basic human rights and the rights of transgender people have decided to launch a hail mary. They've decided, they might say that they should, that everyone should talk, but I think it's pretty clear, judging by everyone's reactions and the comments you've seen tonight, the community has spoken. They want transgender rights be respected, they want human rights be respected, and this is a hail mary attempt to stop that. They have been losing, this has been an effort they've been making not across the state and across the country to fight in the school boards to restrict people's rights, and they're losing. They've lost in this state, they are losing broadly in the country, and they will continue to lose. They've lost all throughout the history of this country, and they're, and they're losing now, and will be, they'll continue to lose. And so I congratulate you and the board for taking the course you have. I encourage you to stay strong in the course you have of respecting people's decent rights. And to those who want to see the rights of transgender people suppressed, to those who basically, who want to restrict our democracy and such, pretty much you're losing. You've lost since the beginning of this country, you've continued to lose again and again, and you will continue to lose in the future. Your ideology will be buried in history where it belongs.
With that, we'll conclude the second residence forum. Do we have any board comments before we move on to executive session?
I do.
Ms. O'Donnell?
I just wanted to thank everyone who came out and spoke tonight and your support of the board and the work is just really appreciated. You know, we don't always get it right, and we don't always do everything we want to, but it's nice to be appreciated. So thank you. And to Mr. Midgley, I just really wanted to thank you for your work because without you, I mean, you're changing students' lives, and having your support and kindness and perspective is what our kids need. So I really wanted to thank you for that. And just lastly, I saw something, someone had, it was a quote maybe, someone had said, "I would rather go through my child having 100 different pronouns than have to write their obituary." And that really stood out for me, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Any other board comments? Okay. We're going to convene into executive session to discuss HIBs and legal. We're going to do it a little differently tonight. We're going to do a split session. We're going to go into executive session to discuss HIBs, and then we're going to come out and vote. So there will be action after the first half of our executive session, and then we're going to go back in and do legal, after which there will not be any action. So we're going to be splitting it up in two. Can I have a motion? It's only been two years and eight months, a year and eight months. Can I have a motion to convene into executive session?
You're so moved.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So I climbed the paddle. And I was so satisfied. It was all in my car, so I'm like, I hiked.
We did Colorado this summer. Pike Peak is not something.
I did Colorado last year.
That's funny.
The funny thing is, I actually went to Colorado knowing that for a concert. We wanted to see this band last year. Yeah. And I said to my friend, so concerts are everything. We should go to Red Rocks and see Los Angeles. And what ended up happening was they had scheduled a concert there two years ago. I didn't even notice. So we went at the pre-COVID concert that never happens. And it was.
Fantastic. Oh, fantastic. Excellent, excellent. All right, well, we got a week or two left, right?
Oh.
How are you doing?
Good.
Nice lighting on the seat.
Good. Like yourself.
Go see.
Yeah, go see. There's a back way from my house to get to this place. There's times like that.
You what?
I'll drive to get it.
Did you break down?
Yeah.
So great.
All people here.
Yeah. Do that make sense? I was thinking, do I keep first one? Is it pushing? Yeah, yeah. And I did that. And I sent a picture of like that. And he said every year that's all we did. First practice. It's all. My husband. How do you have surgery?
Better? Yeah. Yep.
You flush far more. You would say this.
Oh boy. They'll take their beer off. Like little people or something like that up here.
Yeah.
In Chicago, it's your man.
Everybody calls him big boy.
I want to fight with his wife.
They're gonna take out.
They're coming. Okay, is this in here? This is sketch. Oh, yeah. I didn't know.
There's a dump out on both of my boats.
Are you ready? We think everyone's set down. Yeah, maybe more than. That's on the color they're doing. That was.
David, Chris, I'm not in my office today.
Oh, he's still waiting. Why would they come out?
They've been out just calling me and running out here.
But why did they come out?
What are you doing?
Just what do I have to do with them?
Every time I'm at my office, I'm like, I'll sit here. I'll be there.
Because you. Alright. They probably won't. But I'm not there. Don't worry. Okay, this is cool. After then. I'm not. I don't. Their work plans. And I don't.
Oh, really? Pretty much on my way.
It's like one, one, one.
Just like a difficult at all.
We were just last week.
Yeah.
Normal work.
It is now. It's pointed out. Maybe start a couple of more.
I know the other hours. She gets four. Then I was sort of concerned. Excuse me. When we ran out of support for them. And then we switched.
He's American, so they must. They're on your backside. People are dealing with.
But I believe in one of them. What he was. How they're here. Just saying. Prior. So kind of like. Well, how they did. And I know that you're lying. You know, with. And we make it. Yeah. We only came out. I. They had a lot of. We just. Of course. If everyone. So we. Now, do you just like talking? After you. Right. Building. Yeah. Hey, I'm sure. I'm sure you can handle it. I agree. And if they're friends, they're kind of others. Um, I'm looking at trouble. Uh, actually. That. That. We should. Guys. Our full schedule. Many. Men. I don't care.
Is that your apartment? I have a private. I saw the. This is how I would like. Or she. And I'm not. Good. Trying to put all this. It's a. Please. I don't.
First.
We often need. We don't.
Yes. Like we're. May I?
I'm proud. Can I tell you?
But I do. But they. That's way. I mean.
I put.
It's.
Obviously. This.
The. And then. And then. And then one. I think. We should. You know by that.
Oh, yeah. Building. Everybody.
Part.
Well, I just. I have no idea. I told them right after I walked in. My marriage. Way.
Oh, and it's.
Taking. I was like, I'm going out. No idea. You were like. Part of it. I'm like. Where. Yeah. I love it. For. I'm worried. Probably. I think that pretty much. I would have put that.
Eight blocks. And that's one. Everyone.
Or. I can't.
But that's a way. The words. One, two, three. And then, uh, we... We're trying to... Um... So, I don't know. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Yeah.
What? You got dead, isn't that it? I went to there, so... I'm sorry. Baby.
But I don't...
I mean, but...
I want more.
Yeah. I'm sorry, beautiful.
Do you... But it's, I guess, so... What you... There's shit, something like that. I'm... 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 I'm free. So, you have a work.
Yeah. Very close. How do you feel? There are kinds. Well, I was...
But you can, you don't count. First name is the last name, my head, that's for forty-eight, April, thirty-one.
Yeah. There are kind of wrong, so, uh, we get off, we go to...
Yeah. It's pretty, uh, difficult. About to get... It's not serious. No. Pretty good. We know you, and there's, uh... Can I just say that? If I have...
So, there's...
I'll take all three of you. And you're, and you had...
Yeah.
Why didn't you...
Yeah.
Did he?
Okay.
Did you ask? Did? Did I have that all? I think that's another house.
I was, um, I was at, I was at, I was at...
I think I heard something.
Yeah.
I didn't hear how about... I started here, and then you're pulling out, and I can't see how.
I... So...
But what's the...
So, um, I need to, my wife, people.
I'm not right here. I think we want to... I think, you know, uh... I, I do agree, because... I was, I was... Yes. And nobody is, no. The Robin Bell is...
So... These people. Uh, there's more. Yeah. What over...
I guess. I understand, obviously.
It's, I love, uh, the law. I think, uh, first of all, just, there's a... It's...
Careful, man.
But you do, you're back, I'm happy. But you do, you're back, you're back, you're... Doing, uh, some, I would, um, but, yeah. So, I... But, uh, but that, uh, I see, so...
I watched, uh... I didn't...
So, I'm sure, I think... I'm sure, too. I'm... It's...
Yeah. There's definitely, I wouldn't have... Although, like, I saw, it was... Barry.
I do need to...
So, that's why, yeah, I...
That's why, I... I do...
In the... But then, you got, you got, you got...
That's why I did... Yeah.
He, and he was on this, Barry, you see? I go through, can I make a call?
That, I remember you still...
And then, totally, start up, looking on my...
Oh, 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 yeah.
Start...
Oh, oh, oh.
So, oh, oh, oh. So, you... You gotta look at this, now, now, with...
Yeah, a little...
Yeah. But I didn't read it, like, yet. No, I'm sure that I can, I can get it, but... No. And it's helpful. Yeah. But, I'm, I'm hopeful, to be, to be... Like, I'm... I know, you know, that, so... But, I'm covering it, I feel that.
And I like the fact that... I mean, it's, you know, uh...
I'll do it, you know, like, uh... Well, I'm really, definitely, I don't think, you know, it's, it's happened, but, yeah, it's, it's...
That was concerning, that it was all, all the, all the, all the, you know, always, you know, for you, uh, I was on...
Twenty, one, two, three. And one that I learned, uh, that was...
Yes. That I haven't, I haven't...
I don't care, but a lot.
I mean, it was... I was like, uh, 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 uh.
Wait, wait, okay, after I just had a, like, maybe, I will... Whoever I want, to, to, or, um, if they're at work, I get work. So, I think, um, well, we...
Okay. It's very... We, uh, uh, sure, yeah. I don't have choice, and I just, like, they, they, like, they were done.
Yeah.
But, you know, uh, way of, uh, say...
Yeah.
But, so, I would rather, you know, I, I prefer... I don't know, um, that way. Where it would be, uh, sort of, honestly, and, and, um... But, you know, like, it's, like...
Like, all, they're... I don't want...
Yeah. And, then, it's, I'm like...
You have, where you look like that.
If you...
That helps with that, a lot.
But, you know, it's, it's, uh, that, uh, um...
I'm wondering, if it's, uh, not, uh, not long. I get it, if you have to. It's...
It's, uh...
I don't know.
So, you didn't have that happen? You have, you have the last...
You know, it's... Oh, she was off her own time.
So...
I don't know if it's important.
Um, well, I'm.
Okay, we can handle that for all of them.
Thank you.
All right. But, but.
Come on, you're gonna stand by the.
And I am.
See, a long time. Well, what is that? I have no one, but what do you have?
So.
Like, I'm not serious, right?
But.
Nothing.
So.
They need us after. Um. I just found out this year. Yeah. Maybe not, maybe not. But I think now that I started teaching psychology.
Right, that requires.
And sociology. So I have maybe thousands of people. I don't know. Now, I'm looking at myself. I think about my.
Yeah. You're very good. Right. And here's how we.
You're right.
What's your age?
Why you find out? That's actually.
You. We're going to play again. No, no, no. But.
We're gonna do that.
Um, we're gonna give you a fair approach. Or maybe split the pot.
No, I would. Done, walking out.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Yeah. Trying lightweight change. Walking out.
But I, I mean. Good, good. You want to find my. I was trying to. Yeah. You're a pretty good guy.
I didn't evolve.
What?
I don't like my. I work big dad. But my mom. Who's up?
Top three.
But I just put a book seriously. I write a book. They made a sort of issue. So I gave them that one. Because of just. That's that's fine. I believe in you. Really. I experienced summer.
Was my life so long to date more important? But, um. It's like. Pretty different. It's very bad. It's a lot. That's what it was.
But sure.
Trying to do what else? Something a lot more. I had.
Yeah. Do you mind? You're not taking that.
Oh, I thought you were taking this one.
Not taking.
I was too.
You know. What?
It's not. It's not.
Okay.
Line three D, line three D.
Hi. Hi.
Into the water. What is it? This one they've got. Oh, okay. Yeah. Oh, okay. How you say it down? Yeah. You want me to do it? Why? I'll. But still, after you just started. Oh, sorry. And look. That person. That's right. Oh. Cool. Okay, I think so. Oh, okay. Uh, thank you. Uh. It doesn't feel me. Like this, this. They have. Very. I see. It would be a perfect. But.
Oh. So I just. Yeah, I'm not getting nothing. Very bad. The other. It's. Actually. I don't know. They might. Just. There we go. So. There we go. Just. I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know. Good. Good. I think that's. I. Obviously. I. They said that very little. Parents. I don't know. Yeah. We had the. Same. Or. After.
If you're ready. If I could.
That group's. The number. But. But. But I needed. That. It's. So. So. First. Of. So. You know. I can.
Yeah, I did. Well.
You. I'm. What's wrong? Always. About. It's.
Yeah. I'm just. We're just. I just. I'm. All part of the. It's. The.
Yeah. So. I count. I'm. I'm sure. It's. Six. I don't know. All.
Um. If. In terms of words. I just felt. Recent. So. The person. Is. I. Stand. To. So. Um.
Yeah.
Shut the AC off?
Oh.
Can you feel it? You remember the first year? We had that energy crisis and we decided to get rid of it.
Yes. Yeah.
And... I guess, and...
No.
It was okay. But they didn't change it.
I don't know.
The... You said, "You hear that?" That's really nice. Do you have two more hours?
So this happens at ten AM? And then what is it?
It's still like...
Two minutes thirty seconds.
Well, we do appreciate it. Thanks, Seth. I think the timing of my reading is off. But it gets really cold at odd times and then it gets hot. I think it needs to be a little bit of... It's really... Seriously, and then when I am there, it's like, "Sorry."
She's back, so... Yeah, I said, "What do you want?"
Washington baseball in downtown Houston, about even half of them. There were hundreds, forty-three million. Just absolutely second to hell, if you hadn't imagined. But the savings involved, the... The fact that the group should run aside and it felt unbelievable. That seems to weigh a ton. And it's not fully under control, they wouldn't do it tonight. So it was taken in the middle of the night, probably eight, or slightly early, they got them up. Shot them out outside. If you see why it happened, it's gonna happen. It's really momentary, it's already had a couple people... Over here, condition not, I really wanted to know.
Uh... This is what you... You go over the... Young man, he's on. And yeah, I had the... Somehow... It's amazing. Sauce side, yeah. So... So no intention. If he hates him, I'm not like, no intention of doing it. Really, really... If he... Uh... Probably likes to go on vacation. And actually, well, that's not... Still, I mean, maybe, probably... Kind of... The primary to us, it's a... A little sauce pour. Uh, green, small green ones. And one has like soy sauce and one is chocolate sauce. So you really, you know, put the sauce... So, uh... Six cups, five cups, and... And that was it. And I was... So it's up there. Yeah? And... And everybody else is like, "Ah, then..."
Yeah.
And I thought they were, they were kind of laughing, like, "Yeah, of course, yeah." Right? So then we done the evening, and, uh... And we were, we're there. So we were able to chat. It wasn't like, "Oh." The other couple just shared. So we were done, like, seriously. "Oh, yeah." And they're like, "Not done." Like, "It's okay." "All right." So... I really, I really... For something like... So I knew Janet, and I know the aisle up and down, everything. And we surfed a lot, so during that surfboard section, often, from a different way. Trying to find... So during, uh, Wednesday... First day I got back here, basically, for the event of your life.
Top shot.
Yeah.
What's in it on today?
It is a lot like machine graphics. It's a whole way with that, in places, you know?
I don't feel...
Uh, it's kind of...
Because, uh, I don't know, not very good. Are you...
Okay. Right. So... So some of them will be in the mix.
Do you see that? I have shown you something about it. I've never seen it.
Yeah.
I've never seen it before.
No, it never, ever, so sure, it's not...
Yes, it's totally new. It's all... See, I'm pretty sure I've never seen it in chocolate.
Oh, yeah, sorry, well.
I think it's tech on, too. Supermarket, for millions of years.
It's got a little kick, though. It's got a little more of those...
Chinese, it's Chinese, huh?
Yeah. Not, not Greek.
How is Cancun an eight? I guess you're... Justin, this word area.
So we just did the... Um, out of the Shiongo, uh, off road. Oh, it's funny you say it, because, uh, you ever watch... It's the exact one.
Yeah, I kind of love that show.
So just sort of watching the last season and... Heard you did that, but... Pretty wonderful.
Yeah. Please, please start asking, ask for, not you, but you. Those are the three, three parts of our...
I think I would say, technically, they have... Not a commission, but a master, and... They have a plan, change, or... And we have two hours of pillers, and, uh, national... I just can't think of any other...
Say a gene place, or not?
Okay.
In the airport?
In here. You ever have that National Hot?
I don't think I have.
Uh, it's not like... I always go around and think that for long. So, uh, a couple places, you're on...
Maybe after the...
You know, if you... That's where they'll have a National Hot, or National Hot, too. The places are, it's almost like, kind of, the... Yeah. Um... But it seemed like there, kind of, like, the relatives, also, you know?
You have to take that back.
It took them, I think, a while.
And, uh, that's what's very interesting.
Oh.
That's the one, three sisters.
What you're on. It's like there, and...
There, there. Oh, my gosh. Oh, that's... That's where our... Always... He had a hurricane, like...
Oh, right.
I was telling you, there was a hurricane, like, in the town. I thought it was...
It didn't, it didn't...
I want his face, make it look... Those are the...
I did something, where I, where I, I waxed me on the... Where I'm like, "Oh, wow." And then you're dead. Orange, and... Yes.
No question. That's true, yeah, right down there. And I remember, just jumping through it.
Check it out.
Right now.
All right. Um, I'm gonna say Nebraska, which, uh, we did Nebraska, and Mr. Shore. Um, I kind of was, uh, got a little card, saw it, but I didn't call. So it must touch a little bit of... You really talk... Yeah. You can write in the title. I'm gonna sit up here, here. Sorry, that's what I would like to ask. I like, um, you're writing all the time. You know, all the time, time, you know, down below my mind. Yep.
Vegas, their coffee, and what can you do for them? I don't know, the coffee, you know? We're not full yet.
She used to, there's one in short, and she said, "Yeah, you're right."
You're a great family, you're a lot.
Right.
You're in the CIA, so now...
Very great. And they had that, and I'm doing... You're like, growing, man. I used to do that, too.
You know what, they're named like, "Stiff."
So, you, you got the way Johnson... Yeah. This isn't everyone. Yeah. Didn't work, so... Yeah, I was, I was, I was, I was like, "Oh, yeah."
And all the people from all over college, the Earth time, Morgan and... And I heard that, that he dumped in, like, the United States. So, but still, I'm back to the Twitter, but he's already, kind of, around, working. This is like, we're gonna call, call him.
This is a hard exception, yeah.
You know, and Morgan and Hannah are very different. Neither call, but then, like, they fly, and Morgan, those people... These girls, who would just, just radio out, and, yeah, who'd maybe get a call.
I would probably not, like, that.
They've been together for two months. And we didn't even stay there. I mean, what do we...
There was something in Boston, yeah.
Well, but he, he works for Amazon, he's a part of Amazon. Yeah. He has a job, so he's... So that's pretty awkward. And the mom, her, and her, we've been there.
Oh, shit, and what did he ever say to you? Oh, no! Oh! I know, I know these people. I haven't seen them.
You didn't see it? I don't, still, understand, but very much, with you, and with the page, and the fact that I'm delivering, and... But, yeah. Well, they have different needs, they have...
Just built, you know?
They was college, or, or college.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. But then they come, and they...
And I'm all, "Uh."
Right. They're fine. But they're... They're like ten years old.
All right, well, that's funny, you told us something.
By the way, I... Yeah, we have, yeah. Uh... I probably go over, hey, no, he takes a... He's around, and I... Or, or... Or, or...
I think you should have them off for sixteen weeks.
This is...
I know.
Maybe the race, I might have been here. And I think that one time, it was kind of dirty. It was not, so...
Here's one, the... And just so that they were doing... And after, the important, and the... We did, we did, and then, it was just, and honestly, so, um, also, so, they... Ended up in medicine, and he sent somebody, wrote it to the guy. And I can see, I can see, he's hoping to, it's in, I think, it's in a... There's no hope, is it? No. I know. So, um, cool. I can hear, I say...
Yeah. But it's not, it's not that people want us to pass it. I say, when you guys...
Yeah, I want to have more, I'm just... But it's so... I'm just...
So you can see, I'm, they did pour off, and there'll be trips, but...
Don't worry about it.
I already... But you're...
Don't worry, right now. There was your own problem.
I don't want to, you know?
We have needed, yeah.
Of course, you know?
No, yeah. He just... Oh, I mean, it's like, you know, the half of you.
Yeah.
And then you just type, you just type, you know, you have not... Other switch, or... There's a...
Oh, it's... One, now. Um, you cut. Oh, yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know? You know, help with, you know? I have to do that, though. Yeah. So, I could do that. You really just have to, you can come out, and you're not funny. I think, I think, I think, yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah. Yes, you would. You might, you might, you might, you might, you know? It's just, I think, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
I mean, I mean, no, really, I have to, 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 you know? You can look at...
She's talking to the walls, and I was just, "Oh, wow."
No, no, see, I mean, I...
Uh... Good. I agree.
I'm not sure, but, just, I'm...
Are you... Yeah.
So, and...
Yeah. It's good, they have... Sanderbell, six, big, or sticky. And then, these are the guys who just don't know where to stop, you know?
Where, where is that?
Uh, it is all over the left, sixteen teams. He's in, he's in the front spot, he's in Sanderbell, and the Green family, that was, uh... Twenty-five people, it's huge. And their, their trips are close, but there's something... Tucson, Santa Fe, Lajwell, Mexico.
So this is, like, who that, the, uh... Oh, yeah.
It's a lot of people.
So, he was on, he's got, uh, a couple teams, right? Their teams, who, they, they won, and a couple teams were, they're now, basically, you know? But then, probably, they... They got all round, and that's a hat. Also, like, yeah, they...
Hmm, see, this is, this is, um, about, you know, like, yeah.
That's really, really, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we should, yeah. They, they, right, they, 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 all, all, they, that's not, most of them, yeah. And, so, they're all, seem to, um...
Did you have anything to add to that?
Something?
I don't know, Chris.
Are you there?
Very far, sorry, everything.
Uh, I sort of remember this, and...
Yeah, by, by, they're, they're not there, coming.
So where did you do it, semester, there, or...
Three weeks, and I'm at one five o'clock. They want, they're going, and they're, and they have you at one five. And you, now, on, fifteen, I'm...
So you're there, you're...
Oh.
Hi.
Come on, Bruce.
Uh, don't need a motion, can you tell the whole question?
Yes.
We just did that, so we just need a motion to...
She's gonna...
Okay. Uh, okay, we just returned from executive session. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a motion?
You do.
Can somebody give me a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the administration's finding and the board's prior decision on HIB number twenty-two. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs... Sorry.
Yeah, I would, I would just add again that, um, finding a HIB, again, it doesn't mean that there's, like, more punishment, or there's, like, it's really a reporting thing, and, and it's how we designate it, so, just add that.
Thank you. Mrs. Spitzer, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Sorry. Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mrs... Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
No.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
No.
Mr. Reimer?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Majority, action, um, motion carries.
Thank you. We are going to reconvene into executive session with no action being taken after this executive session.
Okay. Do you need a motion to that?
Can you do a motion to go back into executive?
Can I have a motion, please, to return to executive session?
So move.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.